I have no idea this is the new setup. What's that right there? What's that right there?
That's probably the new.
What?
The new audio.
Audio, video or audio?
Audio.
What are we talking? Call tech support.
No, it's fine. We're gonna call the order of the planning board, uh, August 3, 2023. Our first order of business is public hearing. Alright. Uh, planning introduction of the planning board members. Tonight we have Madison Pixley, Christina Bernor, Pat Coyne, and Darian Fuor. And the statement of authority, the planning board is established under chapter forty A of general laws of Massachusetts and acts in terms of chapter forty eight under the zoning bylaws of the town of Hammond. Chapter forty one governing the sufficient improvement of plots, closed subdivisions, and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hammond, Massachusetts. As you will notice, the Hammond Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June forty two at six twenty PM. The penthouse, six twenty five Bean Street in Massachusetts on the application of Fedrock Financial LLC as trustee of Kimberlin, whose realty trust for special permit approval for substandard credit lots, parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot C, and fifteen zero three five zero lot E, under section seven point two point four amendment to zoning bylaw, special permit approval for common driveway under section seven point five four two amendment to zoning bylaw to access parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot A, parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot E, parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot C, and parcel fifteen zero three five zero lot B. All parcels are located on Special Road and owned by Fedrock Financial LLC. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for review by the public during normal business hours. But the board has a fixate chair of the Hammond Planning Board published in the William Dam and then patented on May twenty fifth, June twenty first, twenty twenty three. So we are just opening this public hearing tonight and we are closing it. It's scheduled for September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three at six thirty PM. So we've received.
Yeah, oh, I move that we continue the public hearing for case twenty three B to nine seventy at six thirty PM.
We're not allowed to have that, or got to do that on your form today. Okay.
Okay, people sort of sign this document, one copy, or two, two copies, so. He's on. We'll make sure they can hear us.
Alright, so now we'll open our regular report meeting on the ninth, sorry, twenty three. Planning board, um, first order of business, master plan discussion.
Good evening. All two had not been charged about the master plan and we have been disappointed with the new review. Um, people all were talking about, you know, Bob had to grant those who they usually about willing on the grant to spend because it's wireless, maybe be money. Um, we have to pay for it. It thought maybe no action because it was a trust that money was. I think that's a step in giving the thing. I apologize on my own soul. We could have been more supportive at that time, and I think they've known. Let me thank you for the effort you put in. Why it didn't go forward? Maybe it was not the appropriate money. I'm coming to you now because we have an opportunity to fund it again. The town is in a very good shape in terms of free cash, one of the best numbers I've seen in my years, uh, where we're having free cash number of almost a million dollars. I wouldn't have a problem supporting from the board's standpoint, appropriating the extra of like seventy thousand dollars, sixty, seventy thousand dollars if that quote is still good and more if you wanted to re-correct the quote. I can't speak to the other two members, but I think it's a worthy cause to go forward. And I'm here first to, you know, say to you, I'm sorry that we didn't get enough support for you for the annual town meeting. And I'd like to offer you my support for the special town meeting if the board's interest in showing it go forward. In my opinion, and I know we've talked about them, it is good to have a master plan because it does give you credit for things like community contact, things like that, and check marks ahead for grant procedures. I know there was a lot of conversation about it's just gonna be another important, put on a dust and show. You have plenty of those, plenty of reports, et cetera, but there is value to it as well. We look at the changes that have gone through him in the past few years that fifteen years ago we would not have envisioned happening, solar, et cetera. So it is good to have at least some framework that allows the town some guidance going forward. I bring that forward to you. I didn't expect, you know, obviously you're gonna come back for the full board and discuss it further, but I didn't want to say anything, you know, I'm going to put it forth on the special time meeting. If you're clicking, just digress, I know that Jason left and we called Jason and extended talk to him about this as well and extended our thanks for his time on the board as well. And obviously there are ten eighteen paths that may be interested in coming forward as well. To another, to another matter, associate member.
Yes.
You really did some conversation. I had a conversation with you about this, if you want to say I'm interested in that now. I did serve on the planning board for sixteen years and chaired the board for seven of them. I'm selecting for in my nineteen years, when I was on the board of appeals. I did chair the zoning rewrite committee back in ninety nine, that provided the book we are now. So I have a decent understanding of zoning background. I did serve as a member of the planning board and selectman at the same time. We verified that with the state fetishal flowers because neither have oversight over the other. So it's like what they stayed on the planning board because my term was not up at that point. And hey, if you ever want to do something with Spanish memos, I signed them, Spanish memos, I signed them, yeah. If you'd like coming home. I'd like to bring you home if I could. So that's a lot to process, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright, um. We'll do the, we'll just go harder, yeah. Alright, next order of business is to vote the chair. Motion?
I move that we nominate Maddie Maddie Pixley as chair.
One second.
Okay, vote.
I'm in favor.
Alright, uh, next up we've got A and R Bennett Road. Oh, I'm sorry. Guys, come on.
Should I stand up before you, am I ready? No, you can sit at the table as Mr. Wood hit. A little more comfortable. Hi, my name is John Masek, I'm here for Marwadex Associates on behalf of our client, Egan Flanagan and Cohen PC, to bring to the board a proposed A and R plan to subdivide a property on Bennett Road. Not sure how much detail you would like me to go in as far as the, uh, the prior proposals on the property, but this one is quite simple in that we're dividing the existing property, which is, uh, approximately ninety plus acres into, uh, two lots, parcel A to the north, which is approximately thirty one acres, and parcel B to the south, which is sixty two acres almost, basically dividing it into one third and two thirds, and they are to be deeded to and combined with the land of the Butters. As you can see, there are extensive wetlands on the site as well as perennial streams that have limited previous attempts at development, including subdivisions, solar development, and things of that nature, so, um, our client again has decided to, uh, that this is, at this point, the highest and best use, and they would like to dispense with the property as shown. Parcel A to the, to the north, it's roughly, there's a small, well, it's not an access room because it will be combined, but there's a fairly narrow, uh, about sixty, excuse me, forty eight foot wide portion of frontage, and then it goes back twenty four hundred feet to the, uh, easterly property line. And it's roughly, beyond that, it's roughly a trapezoidal piece. And parcel B encompasses the vast majority of the rest of the property. Again, it takes off from Bennett Road back to twenty four hundred feet, and there's, you know, it's a very odd shaped block with, uh, you know, a tail, if you will, extending easterly. Very, you know, it's sixty two acres.
So this parcel A then will be.
Combined.
Combined with this.
Correct, house number ninety, uh, the, uh, it's in the, yeah.
And B two.
Let's go to the Mary and test.
This is an A and R, this is the sting, property, it would be attached to all and.
Oh, but, or, or they, I assume the one on that number ninety probably, um, was, uh, was filled prior to the current zoning, regardless, we're increasing the frontage in area, so it's a moot point. Both existing properties will be vastly increasing their, their land holdings by now.
So these properties suddenly acquired in that manner that they didn't have before.
If on the odd chance they wanted to do something with them, obviously they would certainly be subject to permitting, you know, certainly with their conservation and then perhaps planning, depending upon the use. But to the best of my knowledge, nothing is proposed at this time for either parcel. By understanding that that's correct, they're just looking to combine it to the existing property that they want, and certainly not the purpose of this plan beyond combining.
I'm not a board member, but you showed this all, all this land as, um, one parcel. On our, our assessors, um, they show it as two parcels. Not that, I don't know that it's gonna make a difference because you're breaking it up anyway, so will this, this A and R supersedes anything?
That is the intent, yes, I mean, I believe that.
Because it won't have a problem with when it's filed or anything, that they show it two pieces of property and you show it all as one on the A and R?
I certainly don't have the benefit of the, uh, the tax map in front of me, but, uh, you know, it was all came to Egan Flanagan and Cohen under a single deed, so.
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to make sure, I was gonna call because I noticed this was separate. But now you're deeding it up differently, so call make a difference, okay.
Yeah.
So these, you know, these parcel A deeded and combined with land and.
Yes, which is number ninety, the house shown. They will not be able to purchase it until the plan is, uh, you know, hopefully endorsed this evening and recorded, and then indeed could be written to transfer the property. Not, not until then. Otherwise, until, unless and until this plan is, you know, endorsed and recorded, it's, uh, you know, there's no way to legally transfer it, not, not in separate pieces.
You have the frontage of the two existing lots?
Um, it's not shown on this plan, no. I mean, I certainly, it was part of the drawing, but that, that would be beyond the scope of this, you know, and not required for, for the plan in hand. We certainly have that information, and I think the tax maps are reflective, uh, as I recall. I believe they're accurate.
Yeah, it's just a part of our bylaws, just number one is how's all fronted your prior session, but that'll check.
And then, as I said, not to harp on it, but they are, they're increasing the, you know, existing holdings, so regardless of what they think applied, we're adding to them, so.
That we endorse the A and R for Bennett Road parcels nineteen oh six two and nineteen oh five five?
Second hand.
Favor?
They, they have to require us to, I believe, my laws could be available for pickup right now.
Are you not the owner?
I am not the owner, but, uh, we're really not releasing them to you.
They're supposed to be released to the owner.
I'm not, I'm not sure that attorney cost wants to come by, but I'll let him, that's fine, that's your standard, your, your standard procedure, that's, I understand, Paul.
I think if the attorney wants this, maybe you're just gonna come get. Come on.
Oh, no, I'm good. I will let him know, I'm sure he can make arrangements somehow to, I mean, it's all by the law.
I'll just hold it until he calls and tells me when they're picking it up.
Sure, I, I imagine they'll have somebody from the firm come by, I think, I would need that some fact, I mean, it's owned by a corporate entity.
Alright, so it's not the planning board, I'm calling.
I will do that, absolutely, thank you. Yeah, I understand, thank you for that, I'll be back.
Five Bennett Road?
Yes.
Right, five Bennett Road?
Five Bennett Road?
Five Bennett Road.
So I'm basically just here tonight to, uh, okay, a business that I'll be running for home. I'm basically just going to be a financial analyst right now. And I see that just, uh, I went to school at the Providence College for marketing and finance, and, uh, it's the past couple of years after working in the state with my father, and I found like this is the time for me to kind of go off and, um, do my finance and marketing work, um, as a financial analyst. What I'm basically gonna be doing is, um, using my computer and some tools at home to just be watching the market and, uh, coming up with ideas for my clients. Um, every week, you know, I can send helps and I'll basically give them the information about the market and, uh, the, I actually decisions to make with their, kind of go forward and, you know, kind of. So I just wanted to be okay, I'm, I'm huge, uh.
So basically from your home?
No, so basically, uh, you do research on my own, I'll be working out in the office at my house, and if I didn't meet with clients, it would be via email or video messenger, but there would be like physical cars coming to the house, and also pretty physically coming to the house.
Do you need any kind of license to run an office or application?
No license, no, not, not really, I mean, this is basically work, research work that I'll be doing on my own and, um, education, I kind of manage my own, that's where I'm starting anyways.
No police?
No, police, just, uh, so.
You have a house?
Yeah, I have, that's, I will be the only, the only living inside and outside of that house, so I'm gonna be able to come in, I will be the only person working in the business.
No sign of that? No exterior storage?
No exterior storage, so, you know, equipment, um, outside of my office, which inside will, you know, maybe a TV, you know, to watch. I know, right? Only if you're required.
You have page ninety five.
I saw with taxes?
Yes.
That we approved the application for home occupation, five Bennett Road, or, uh, Luke, what's your last name?
Sure, Coach Anowski.
Coach Anowski, okay.
Financial coach.
Okay, nice. Alright, um, and five Bennett Road.
On second?
I'm in favor? Alright, great.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to okay for everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll be going to eat tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
It's two fifteen, Monday over here?
I tried calling and get fourteen minutes, but we, so.
Alright, seventy three Allen Street?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Shero, I am from Beacon Wilson, I represent the applicant. Um, we wanted to make sure that we present everything. There's been some updates as originally presented at the April meeting. Um, there are some questions about the home occupation, how would be run, what was going on? So we've kind of addressed some of that, so I'm gonna present to you. Um, it's my understanding that the, the proposed name of the school, um, was, you know, there were some issues or concerns regarding it. The official name will, has been changed, uh, we changed it with the Secretary of State, is now Universal Adult Swim School. Uh, the ownership entity of the property has changed from Google Williams Inc. to Tommy O Real Estate LLC. They are both entities controlled by Ms. Roxanne and Horowski, um, but the structure of the new entity makes more sense for, for ownership of the state. So still owned, operated by the same person, um, just simply a change. It, you know, the, the new deed has already reported at book two five oh four six, page one sixty. The property is now occupied by Brett Brenner, who is here this evening, so he is the applicant, but the owner, Ms. Horowski, is here as the owner and approving. He will be the primary operator of the swim school and living in the residence full time. He has moved in, he lives there, you know, that is the primary purpose of him being there. Uh, he is licensed in teaching swim lessons to children and adults, he is a certified pool operator. Um, and so that is kind of setting the stage so far as, you know, this needing the requirements under seven twelve for, um, the valid home occupation. As I stated before, the school is now operated by a resident of the home, Mr. Brett Brenner. Use as the swim school is secondary since his primary use is as a full time resident. There, um, there will be one other swim instructor, um, to meet that the employment requirements. The use of a swim school is conducted indoors, there's no external noise or other nuisances that, um, will be produced, the pool is fully attached to the home. It's kind of a very unique structure that the previous owners ran, so it's fully enclosed. Um, from the exterior, it doesn't look like anything other than an. Um, from the exterior, it doesn't look like anything other than an extension of the home, the siding matches, the roof line matches. Um, the, there is an architect who has been engaged, the home is aged. And so there are some maintenance and required um kind of upkeep that needs to happen. Also, one of the main purposes of this school is to expand not just teaching swim lessons, but a particular emphasis on teaching um. Persons with disabilities to use the pool. So there are certain plans um being developed to maybe make changes, to make the building more accessible. When, you know, all the property permits and everything will be pulled and approvals sought for when those plans are finalized. Um, the sign out front uh for the old swim school has been removed. At the current time, there isn't a plan um for a new sign, one hasn't been drawn up. But once they get to that point, um, the applicant, they will conform to the sign requirements under the bylaws and seek the appropriate approvals. Um, like I said before, you've driven by, you know, it kind of looks like a funky home without extension on the front, but it still looks like a residential home uh within the neighborhood. There is plenty of adequate off-street parking for employees and visitors in connection with the use. Um, no more traffic will be generated by the home occupation than, than you otherwise see in that district. Knowing where it is down the road from the police station and um the senior center and right near the commercial area in the town, there's already significant traffic. The maximum class size is gonna be twelve, but they anticipate having smaller classes and below a lot of one-on-one. Or smaller class sizes. Um, so, you know, that's kind of an update and a more comprehensive um. Uh, way to address the, the previous kind of home occupation that was presented beforehand.
So are there swim lessons happening already?
No, they're waiting until the home occupation is approved. They don't want to move forward until um the town, you know, was, was okay with it.
Are you, so we need approval?
You approved it with, of the contingency that um.
I forget her name.
She was going to live there.
Roxanne.
So now you're here to update us, to tell us that you've changed the name and the ownership?
So she, yeah, so the resident is different. The overall owner of the entity structures, she's still the same, so it's still Roxanne. Um, she couldn't move into the home herself because uh it, you know, she has a disabled son and the home wasn't built for that. Um, so instead they have a tenant who is an employee, who is employed, like he is running the swim school. Um, so it's uh still a home occupation with a full time resident with approval of the owner of the, of the real property.
It won't be the hours of operation?
So the planned hours of operation are just daytime hours, nine AM to four PM, Monday through Friday.
So since, pardon, some lessons are normally like a specialty almost, something. Everybody's still to show like vehicle, no buses are bringing people in or?
Correct, yes.
So you can say no buses or? That? That seems to be sensitive to monsters, is it?
Um, they anticipate, you know, mostly individuals, if, you know, persons with disabilities. You know, if they expand to school programs, I'm not sure so far that's not, you know, it's early stages up and running. And just kind of will be seeing um kind of what, what the interest is so far as the community and the working communities.
So employees will be the first living there and one other person, is it?
Correct.
So currently people are coming there as just a single, so I'll say one card at a time service fee, is it?
Well, currently it's not up and running. It is anticipated that um, you know, they will then get signups going. The plan is to offer discounts to younger residents and just focus on smaller class sizes, welcoming people. Mostly on a, it's gonna be a signup basis, people will sign up, it won't be, you know, people group, large groups of people can't just show up and use the pool. Um, specifically targeted for, you know, swim lessons, um, for different, you know, abilities and ages.
The original proposal, yes? Can you get the name, what's she said was?
Universal.
Universal uh. At a swim school.
Adapt Swim Institute?
Yes, is my understanding.
So it's no longer Universal Adapt Swim Institute Incorporated?
Correct, now instead of institute is now school.
So you guys are all set with DEP stuff?
DEP, are there DEP founders? Department of Environmental Protection?
Yeah, they're, sorry, the lawyers that have already tested.
Okay.
Let's just see.
Yeah, we're testing, while they're approved.
Yeah, I just asked them that it has to be done, certain things have to be done within thirty days, so. I believe that we approved the new device on occupation for site plan. For seventy three Allen Street, Universal Swim, uh, Universal Adapt Swim School. Over, under, okay, so under a new owner and with one employee other occupant of the.
Good second.
Since you're coming, so prepared. I just go through the list. Alright. Three oh eight Summers Road?
Hi.
Hello.
Alright.
Good, how are you? Back. Thank you. So my name's Eric, um, from three oh eight Summers Road, I'm a NRA firearm instructor. Buy for a business back in November. At the time, back in November, I was only certified as a home firearm um safety instructor. Which a home firearm safety uh instructor consists of. Um, just home firearm safety, there's absolutely no live ammunition allowed at all with the home firearm safety courses. Um, in the classroom, you use dummy rounds and so on. Um, there's no live ammunition in the classroom whatsoever. And Mar- on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and they're getting certified through the NRA as a basic pistol instructor. Which the classroom also consists of, um, eight hours in the classroom. Deals with no live ammunition at all in the classroom. You do use real firearms for hands-on purposes, but you deal with uh blank, uh, pretty much called dummy rounds. Um, to learn how to practice loading, unloading and so on. After the class is completed, um, if you live in Connecticut or want to get an out-of-state permit in Florida or Utah, it's a requirement to do live fire. So, way most businesses run it, after you complete the course info, the firearms instructor brings them to a range. Like there's a multiple, you saw metal that bring them to Springfield Sportsman's Club and Munson. Um, or if you have property that's legal to shoot, you can bring them there to shoot. It consists of a minimal ten rounds and you shoot a target and they have to hit at least eight out of ten rounds. So, it's pretty much why I'm here. Um, I understand that someone ordered my business and that's about it. Um, I ended up printing out. Few things for you guys to take a look at. Um, on the first page, it does show when I was certified as just a home firearms uh instructor. And then it shows my new certification date for the certification as a pistol instructor. Then the next couple pages go into details about the home firearm instructor, there's a pistol instructor. And on the last page is the NRA classroom rules, which shows that at no time, there is no live ammunition allowed in the classroom. And no one's allowed to even carry a firearm in the classroom if it has any type of live ammo, so.
So you're, you're doing any of the live fire dumbfingers?
What was that?
You're, are you doing it?
No live.
No, I do um live fire, but it's not during the class afterwards, if you need a, need a qualification for like Conne- for Connecticut, Florida or Utah. But when I do that, um, I either use Springfield Sportsman's Club.
You're not doing it on your property?
I, I have done that on my property. Which I also printed out where, where I do it on my property and the distances and everything. Um, I'll pass that along to you guys too. The. Nice, pass it on the paper, but the minimum for Massachusetts, you need a minimum of five hundred feet from a blown. I exceed five hundred feet in every direction. Um, so I ended up printing that out and I also printed out. Uh, like how many classes I've done in the last ninety days, I've only done three classes. Then I printed out, I also got a liability insurance to cover it of two million dollars in case anyone ever gets hurt, injured or anything. And I don't know if you guys have ever been to a range, but I printed out a picture of where I, where I would, where I do hold some of the live fire. And if you guys look at the burn, if you guys have ever been to a range, it's three times the size of any burn, which is what stops the void of anywhere in Massachusetts.
That was my question.
This is your property? That is my property, yes it is. There's a twenty-eight foot burn in Massachusetts, they recommend four feet above the highest target you shoot at. That's over twenty feet above what the target's ranked. Which I shoot a lot on my own, um, like I said, classes are on here, I've only done three in the last ninety days. I'm a full-time police officer, that's my, what I do full-time. I don't run very many classes.
Like what, what kind of day of classes are they made?
Uh, my days off, I tend to do from eight in the morning till approximately four in the afternoon for the, for the pistol course. For the other course, it's only a four-hour course, which I usually do eight to twelve, so that wouldn't visit live fire at all. So it's, the live fire typically runs from eight in the morning till four in the afternoon.
Just so you know, I spoke to the police department, they said it seems to be everything's. No complaints, someone just said that they're doing live fire there and read the minutes and noticed it said no live fire. So we said we better just have, I mean, to update our home occupation, that's all, just to update it.
Yeah, which is, when I first applied, I was only for the home firearm, which doesn't require it. I ended up being certified out there, then I actually, I'm very, very familiar with the laws and.
Don't tell.
Seriously, seriously. So, ended up reading, reading everything and making sure that I exceeded everything.
Just so I know, you have someone's date of birth and here's five five.
Yeah, I must say.
Don't we have to turn it in, but you might want?
I do have to, and that, once it's actually concluded, Paul.
We're almost one month old to begin.
That's a problem, because I need to do at least fourteen years old to have a game.
Better put on the record, Mr. Eric, there was not a complaint, just so you know. I want to put on the record, there was no complaint.
I, I didn't know what else.
No, no, there was no complaint. Just so we have enough records.
That's very helpful. Um, I believe that we update the home occupation for EDA Sports three oh eight Summers Road to include live fire as we will mention.
Second, that move.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
And if you, you have any other change, just come back. I know I'll put goodbye.
I am, I'm trying to film certified with another instructor, different type of defensive tactics. Should I come back for that? No, it's, it's for defensive tactics, it's like hands-on.
But nothing to do with this physical property?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm probably gonna do it later.
Then you have to go.
I do, alright, perfect. You guys, you want you guys to keep all that paperwork or it doesn't matter?
I don't, I don't.
You don't need it.
Well, do you need it?
Not really.
I mean, this would be good showing the location, I think, but if you don't, if you don't want to leave all that, you don't have to.
Um, you get, take.
Take this page.
Yeah, actually, we get that.
I know this.
One for the classes.
Can't you, I think it's all in use, but I mean, it's.
Saying the certification?
Yeah, it's good to.
Here. This one you don't need, or do you want? You want us to keep this one? No, I, not any, no, okay.
Thank you guys very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Great. Nothing left for me to end up. So how about we hear a motion to change our meeting time, sorry, September thirteenth, September thirteen?
Second motion.
Yeah, change it, you said just the September thirteenth.
I said starting, so, oh, okay, sure. Okay, got it. Okay, got it. Let's do meeting minutes. Did you guys have anything you wanted to?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure, if you could say your name and.
Sure, Darla, I will call it, five sixty-four Glendale Road. So I'm just here basically to request to be put on the agenda for our next meeting in regards to amending our commercial solar installations in residential areas. Is this, do I go about this, do we get it on the agenda, do you need me to get signatures?
So what exactly do you want to make? She wants, she called me, she, what she wants to do is in the solar bylaw for large scale, anything more than twenty-one hundred square feet panels, she doesn't want, do not want it to be allowed within the residential districts without a special, with or without, with a special permit either, right?
Right.
So she wants to go to process.
Has done.
Okay.
And I do have that information, I can bring it at the next meeting if you'd like.
Okay. I don't think that we could amend.
No, it would be a petition, a people's petition, I believe, to change the zoning bylaw.
And then would have to go to.
Tell me every day.
It would have to wait till May?
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
Think I told you that?
Yeah, we did discuss that, but I didn't know if it was something we could do.
And they don't think it will apply to any current, right?
It's already.
Yes. So anything that's already in the works, they're.
So the applicants came in and they moved their plot lines. So that made them hold the zoning bylaws for three years. So amendments that happen now wouldn't, that wouldn't apply to that.
Right, right, as you're well aware, Glendale Road, I'm in a butter to the mess that's proposed for there, so. I understand that it may not help in this.
I know, just wanted to know.
Yeah, just wanted to.
But I think it's important for us now, because there are so many towns and states that are finally realizing what a bad idea this is. So doing this now will still help the town going forward, even if it doesn't help me. So, so do I need to get signatures?
There's a process, I don't know, I don't know if it works like, or the town clerk can tell you for a people's petition to change the zoning bylaws. So many signatures are required, then you have to be verified through the town clerk of the people on the list, and then I think you have to present it to the board of selectmen. There is a process, you probably should speak to Eva, the town clerk's office.
Would this still be considered a zoning change? Because I don't want the zoning changed, I just want banned from residential areas.
Just to change to the my law within the zone.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so not, it wouldn't change the zoning itself, just the zoning by law.
Right.
So.
Gotcha, okay. So just give Eva a call and see if she can get signatures.
I would ask for the process for people's petition to change my law.
Okay, and even if I get that, does that call for a special meeting, or is it still a way to like?
It would be brought up on the warrant for annual town meeting, I believe. That's how we did the solar bylaw, the original one, when the residents changed that bylaw. It was brought up on a warrant article of town meeting.
Okay, I've read up on it a lot, and a lot is still a little sketchy.
It's not really clear.
Is that for interpretation?
Yes, exactly, so. Okay, well, I will.
Yeah, first that to Eva.
Okay.
And then if we have to be involved, we'll involve us, you need to.
Perfect, alright, thank you for your help.
Thanks.
Yeah. Right.
Can you say it?
Right.
I love it.
Application?
Don't.
Alright.
Each minute, we have.
We've got June fourteenth and June thirteenth.
The regular and the public camp.
Oh, camp, yeah.
When's the regular?
Man's for purple?
No, the other, the other.
Mine's orange.
Oh, okay, got it.
So you opened that buckle on.
I need, we have to do the regular meeting minutes, or two fourteen, to make sure in addition to the public hearing minutes, needing that to get twenty-two. So the. Second.
Oh, neighbor? Who's that?
Yeah.
Oh, I know, okay.
Just to help, I'm just saying, I sent him a text message, he has to do a formal written resignation, he has to go to Eva's firm to be effective, so. Yeah, so he's gonna do that.
To do the hearing process discussion.
Oh, had asked to put that on the agenda, to discuss the process if somebody keeps submitting site plans that are not.
Yeah, so we had, we talked a little bit.
Oh, I got, yeah, like.
Throw director up?
Yeah.
Has there been any history of saying, you know, at some point, is there not?
You can join us, we want you to.
So that, that was it, that was my thought, you know, given some of the things we've seen. So is there, is there a reason to think of a procedure or something, or you would say?
I guess that there's probably national laws.
I don't know, if you submit a plan, they don't consult your special permit process, and it's not included, or you can deny the special permit.
Yeah, you could always just.
And then not give them a chance.
And then they have to reapply in two years if you did not.
Yeah.
So that's why you've given them the opportunity a couple times, how many, you're saying how many times?
Yeah, then do we have any history of saying, you know, after three, four, no?
I think that's worth asking.
Yeah.
Yes, can.
Yeah. So John, what do you think?
I don't, I don't think they can talk.
Yeah, I can.
Oh, she just, yeah, okay.
So you're asking if they can resubmit?
Well, no, so how many times can we person them back with the same site plan if it continuously has issues that we see need to be fixed?
Legally, unlimited, but, you know, if you can.
Buy something, they couldn't reapply for two years.
True, true. Once you make a decision, they're precluded for two years, right? Unless something materially hugely changed, like they bought more property, it's clearly a different application. Maddie, can I ask a question about the gun thing?
Yeah.
Was there any talk about decimal levels, you know, coming off the property? Live fire, okay. Just wondering if the neighbors, I mean, they were aware of, there was like dummy rounds before, and now it's live fire. Were they really aware of the change in, in his use?
It's still dummy round, it's still.
But he's talking about the noise that John home on. I, I spoke to the police department, John, on that. And they said they have had no complaints, and they're well, they're well aware of him doing that.
Okay.
There was no official complaint.
I don't think there's any decimal restriction in vast state laws either.
We, our bylaws have a, have a noise level above.
Right.
During certain.
But within our noise, certain decimal sounds has to be proven that it's above that. But I don't know if the gunshot reaches that or not, but the police said they're aware of it. Nobody's complained to them at all, most people don't even know he's doing it, because he has so much land.
That's what they told.
So I don't.
We had a big problem with Casabella a few years back, and, you know, I know there's a gun guy at the end of Weir Road that does target shooting, and the neighbors have made an issue of it. But.
Do you know where in the book the decimal level is?
Oh, you're testing me now, I like that.
I mean, if you want to be an associate member, you gotta.
Development, section seven, I think, site development, or what are you talking about?
The sound.
It all sounds great.
Sounds great.
That's why I just asked.
We dealt with it. It's another project.
Oh, we did, we did that.
Yeah, it was.
Light down here existing. Sign. Sound, sound.
Oh. The maximum for ritual sound pressure level of any continuous, so here's the thing, continuous, regular, or frequent source of sound produced by any user activity shall not exceed the following limits at the property line of the sound source.
How far do we want? It's five hundred feet from each property line. Is it up there? He said you have to be five hundred feet.
Well, from a dwelling.
Well, I, I, definitely, five hundred feet from a dwelling.
Yeah, look at the map provided, he's showing each dwelling nearby, but his property lines. He translated it to be.
Yeah, so he's, he's well beyond the five hundred.
Some dwellings, but I haven't got property line. This is probably still.
Oh, the police didn't have a problem with it.
Unless we get a specific noise complaint, I'm not worried about it.
Regular or frequent, he's not even fre, he's not continuous, regular or frequent. But that's a good point. Just to be there, because that's a pretty good.
That's hard.
Yeah. Although, but it's. So now. Um, you show them to pick that. So now we all need to be.
Are we, um. I put the calendars in the front page, did you notice that?
Yeah.
Okay, could you ask, well?
Yes, but we're, I'm just, we all have to be here for public hearing.
Yeah, three is a form for a regular meeting.
But for a special.
Special permit, we have to have four, and it has to be unanimous vote. And we have to alert the applicants that it would have to be unanimous. So if they decide they don't want to proceed, the four-member board, they would have to wait until.
Okay, if we obtained an associate member.
They sit in on public hearings.
Yes, okay. The news that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.